Good evening, everyone. We would like to welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting. Call our meeting to order at 7 o'clock. And we will just kick off our present approval, right? I'm a new chair, so I'm going to ask lots of extra questions tonight and hopefully not take up too much extra time because everyone's time is precious. So, we do appreciate being here, citizens, city staff, other guests, and we will get through our agenda as best we can. Okay, so, item two on our agenda is approve our minutes from our February 12, 2025 meeting. But everyone get a chance to read through those. Any questions or corrections?
Nope.
Okay. So, can I just motion that we approve them as written?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We were anonymous.
We were anonymous.
Item three on our agenda is our public hearing to take comments for or against ordinance 562, Housing Affordability. And Jenny is going to introduce our new contracted planner. And then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to introduce to you, and actually, we have Brandon still in our midst tonight joining us, so we welcome him as well. This is Sarah from Jones &amp; Associates, and she will be working with us as our contracted planner as we move through our new projects. I'm sorry, we should announce that our audio is not working well in our speakers, so we'll do our best to project our voices, but we're having difficulties with our speakers. So, we will turn some time over to Sarah to give us a little bit of background on this ordinance, and Brandon as well. If you prefer before the public hearing, we typically like to give the public an idea of what the public hearing is about.
Okay, so we'll hear from Sarah and Brandon, then we'll review our rules for public hearing, and we'll go to that point. So, can everyone see the screen, I guess, from both sides? Well, I can stand over here, I'm trying to think so that everyone can see from each side. All right, so I just wanted to introduce where, why this ordinance came about. And first, I'm going to give some background on housing affordability in the state of Utah. I'm sure everyone's noticed housing is expensive, and the last 10 years or so it's gotten exponentially expensive and very difficult for people especially to own homes, get into homes if they didn't get into homes earlier. There's been a lot of research done by the state and other agencies nationwide, trying to figure out what causes houses to be so expensive. And there are really two main driving factors here. One is just the lack of supply, and this is happening especially in Utah where we are bringing in a lot of people, whether it's our children. We tend to repopulate the state very well here, and also it's a attractive place for people to move, and that's causing a lack of housing supply. We are not able to keep up with the demand that Utah has, and it's causing the existing supply price to increase. Another issue is that Utah has generally been zoned for very large residential lots, and these larger lots require the developer to put larger homes on the lots so that they can cover the cost of all the infrastructure to put those homes in place. So, our zoning requirements plus a lack of housing supply has really driven up the cost of our existing housing. So, Utah is aware of this, and several years ago enacted a code that required every municipality in the state of Utah to have an affordable housing plan. So, this means in the city's future land use, they needed to look at the land, look at what was going on, and figure out how are we going to incorporate affordable housing into our communities. This is important because without affordable housing, we're missing housing for a very important subset of our population, and it's generally a part of the population that's contributing very crucially to our communities and how they thrive. And if they don't have places to live, then we're not able to attract the workers that we need for our communities, and our children are not able to stay and live by us if our housing is particularly expensive. So, I'm going to turn the time over to Brandon. I was not here for the creation of this ordinance, now that we're switching over, but Brandon has been a big part of figuring out what is Harrisville's plan to keep housing affordable in Harrisville City.
Thank you, sir. So, I feel that Harrisville City's been very proactive in creating affordable housing. They've got some condos, they've got some townhomes, but like Sarah alluded to, there's a demographic of people, and we're going to call it the missing middle, people that are currently living in townhomes or condos and looking to move up or change or grow, but there isn't a lot of the product type that they're looking for. And so, last October, September, October, we sat down and started looking at ways that we can help meet that missing middle demographic, so to speak, and looking at ways that we can create an ordinance or something that would allow developers or builders to come in and create something other than a condo or a townhome, hopefully a detached structure. So, we began working on the ordinance, and this is what Harrisville City is currently doing to encourage housing, if you wouldn't mind. This slide comes directly out of the ordinance, and I want to just read it. It says, "Critical homeownership developments in Harrisville offer a new approach to affordable housing. The zone overlay creates a path to homeownership for a wider range of residents by providing attainable housing without compromising quality or aesthetics, echoing Harrisville's rich history of multi-generational communities. These developments foster diverse, inclusive neighborhoods where families can thrive, put down roots, and build strong foundations for their future. Through innovative design and efficient land use, they create attractive living spaces where affordability and a strong sense of community go hand in hand." That right there is what Harrisville is trying to achieve, is allowing people to live in the city for long periods of time. We don't want them in and out. We want them to be here and to be part of the community, just as Harrisville City has always been. Jenny, you can try. So, what does this ordinance do? It creates qualifying districts, it provides for ownership occupied, de-restricted homes, it gives priority to homeownership, and there's a target price. This is a, now, I'm going to regress a little bit. I was recently in a meeting where I heard somebody say that in 1950, they had it right. And if you stop and think, and this took me back to my grandparents' home where they had a bungalow, and the bungalow didn't have a garage. It had a living, kitchen, three bedrooms. And as my grandparents' family grew, they added a garage, they added on to the back of the house, and some of those houses that are out there now, those old houses, have some character to them. But they grew with the home, and they had property that allowed them to do that. That is what we're trying to accomplish in this homeownership zone, is to provide housing types that allow people to grow into them. So, maybe they don't have garages right now, maybe it's just a house, maybe they have the ability a few years down the road, when they're doing a little bit better financially, to be able to add on to the house or to grow at the house. So, this is what we're hoping to try and accomplish, is some affordable, attainable homes that people can move into or flex into. Is that it? Okay. So, the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight is an ordinance that we've been working on. We've had several meetings. I think some of you have been involved in the discussions of those meetings and that I feel comfortable about how we've gone about the process. This has been a very open process. Is the ordinance perfect? Probably not. It probably can be refined and improved, but it doesn't have to be perfect right now. We need to know what the product is that's going to be coming in and learn from that and grow from that and change that ordinance. So, that's what our discussion is, our open public hearing is tonight, is some input from the public on this ordinance.
Okay, thank you to Sarah and Brandon for the information and the history of ordinance 562. I'm going to briefly review the rules for public hearing. Right now, we will shortly open our public hearing. It will give you an opportunity to state your opinion and share your thoughts. Please remember, tonight's public hearing is not a discussion and feedback in regard to questions and comment, regard to your questions or comments, and that may not be provided tonight within the meeting. Please remember to state your name clearly and speak into the microphone, even though we have some audio difficulties, when taking part in the public comment period. Each person will have three minutes. Please be mindful of the time limit. Be respectful, no shouting, pointing fingers, or applause, and any member of the public will be asked to leave if conduct is disorderly and escorted if necessary. And the governing body, on a two-thirds vote, may expel any person who is disorderly during the meeting. And I will add, because I've been doing this for a few months now, that I appreciate the decorum that we've had in our public hearings. It's been great, and hopefully we can continue that tonight. So, now, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mandy Lynch. Good evening, commissioners. I would like to speak today about concerning developments that touch on a fundamental principle of urban planning, community participation, and transparency. As a city, we have established zoning laws and guidelines that govern how our land is used and developed. These rules are not arbitrary. They reflect the vision we, as residents, have for the future of our city. Zoning is more than just regulations. It is about maintaining order, predictability, and balance in how we, in how our neighborhoods grow. One of the core principles of zoning is that it ensures public input and oversight in the development process. When changes are proposed to our city's landscape, whether it's a new development or zoning modification, those changes should be discussed openly with the community. The public should have their voice in how their neighborhoods evolve. This is not just a matter of formality, it is about preserving the demographic, democratic process, and the trust that the people have in the city planning commissions. However, when we allow developments to bypass these checks by avoiding public hearings, ignoring zoning laws, or proposing backdoor changes like overlays, we undermine that trust. The role of the planning commission and elected officials is to ensure that the decisions are made in the best interest of the entire community, not just the developers or special interests who may stand to gain from the changes. This transparency is what helps keep the system accountability and equality. Without it, we risk creating a city where decisions are made in isolation without input, with no input from those most affected by the changes. The idea of circumventing zoning laws through overlays or discretionary decisions shifts the power from the community to unelected city staff and developers. This creates a dynamic where the decisions are made without sufficient scrutiny or public accountability. It is a slippery slope that threatens to erode the very foundation of our demographic, democratic decision-making. We should not let the developers dictate the terms of the growth, considering our long-term impact of the residents and our neighborhoods. The value and needs of the residents who live, work, and invest in this city should always be the driving force behind any decision. When we move forward with developments, we must do both, so thoughtfully, collaboratively, ensuring the voices of the community are heard and respected every step of the way. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, committee members. Charles Lynch. An acreage is going for anywhere from 169,000 for 0.29 acres to a half acre for $225,000 on Realtor.com. It's no doubt that many want affordable housing. However, when a contractor says they will put up affordable housing, let's really think about affordable. Most contractors will spend $250,000 putting in a subdivision, utilities, roads, et cetera. This is for a basic subdivision, roughly $25,000 per home. When they will put up the absolute basic home, as was shown here, we mean truly basic. These homes are very, very basic, to say the least. This basic home will cost them $180,000 to construct, it's concrete, trusses, drywall, paint, and everything. However, they need to be paid with their 20% to 40% markup. Before you know it, you're at $260,000. Hold on, we haven't discussed the building lot. That building lot is not free. They're going to mark that one up, too. There's another $200,000. Now, let's go to the bank. What's the current interest rate? 6%. If you have impeccable credit. Before you know it, we're at a half a million dollar loan for a quarter acre lot. Having done this in 2018, we closed on a $560,000, or $460,000 loan just over here. So, we do know, when Harrisville hints at affordable housing, it's simply not in the cards. Affordable is gone. The only one that this makes sense to is the contractor, because they will be taking and taking and taking, and there are no longer any opportunities for the individual trying to build a home. $200,000 lot, $240,000 base home, it is simply not affordable anymore. Affordable housing needs to be removed from that. It is simply not in the cards. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Iverson. I will begin and probably end with this thought. I've read through the proposed ordinance 562 and feel that I can sum it up in a single sentence. I believe it to be a tool that municipalities can use to force through high-density housing despite existing zoning regulations. I know this sounds simplistic, but I believe it to be an accurate description of what lies at the core of this particular ordinance. Sean and I have lived here for over 30 years. During that time, the most frequent reason we've heard as to why residents love this community is due to its rural flavor. Harrisville is one of the few places left where this is the case, and I worry about what we will lose if we don't at least try to preserve it. I suspect this is one of the original purposes behind zoning specific areas as A1 agriculture, and I believe that purpose continues to be valid. If you read through the existing code, you'll notice that this concept, open space, which is what I'm trying to get to here, is given a lot of credence. In fact, it is mentioned 13 times in Title 11, Section 16. Do you know how many times the replacement ordinance 562 mentions open space? The answer is zero. It doesn't even mention the importance of open space in new development planning. Personally, I feel the current version of the city code is far superior and much less confusing. In fact, I consider the proposed ordinance 562 to be what only I can discover, I can describe as a mess. I'm not alone. I don't know if you are aware of this, but there is virtually an identical ordinance that was recently proposed in Lehigh. The proposed Harrisville Housing Affordability Overlay Zone is virtually identical to a proposed Lehigh Affordable Homeownership Overlay Zone. The Harrisville version has simply been reworked a bit. Skip a whole bunch of stuff. But let it just say that it has been covered in some articles, and I can share those with you and show you how it's basically been a boilerplate ordinance that is, in almost every respect, identical to the other one. I won't waste our time by delving into specifics of 562, but I feel it's important to reiterate my one-line summation. Once again, this is simply a tool that cities can use to force through high-density housing despite existing zoning. I'd like to end by thanking all of you for your service. I would encourage you to do what the Lehigh Planning Commission did when presented with this cut and pace ordinance, and that is to send a negative recommendation to the city council, or at least table this for further evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm zooming the sound is off. Can you turn that on? Is that possible?
It's likely because of our sound system.
It's all tied in together.
Yes, it's all tied in together. My apologies. We haven't gotten that feedback. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Pia, good evening. My husband and I always wanted to live up here. He lives down the street. But when he grew up there, and when his dad passed away 10 years ago, we purchased his home, and we were, it was a stretch for us back then, but we always wanted to live here because of the community. We love this community, we love the wide open space. For his job, we had to leave the state in time, so we really appreciate this place, and it means a lot to us. And when we moved in, one of the considerations was that there's acre lots or vigor, which means, yes, we will have open space, and that's why we made the investment. Like I said, it was quite a stretch for us. So, now we live up here, and we love waking up to the smell of horses and cows, and here the roosters grow. What a rare treat Harrisville City is. It is just wonderful because we still have the community. Well, our community is close enough, we can go the opera, but yet we're out in the country. We can do our shopping, but we're still, we feel like we're out in the country. There's the snow cap in Loma. We look out the window and we see it. We absolutely love this place. So, we feel like we have made an investment, and the investment was in this kind of living. And we are residents here in Harrisville, and we have a stake in what's happening to Harrisville. So, when we have developers come in from the outside, their interest is not in Harrisville City, it is in developing the land and then moving on. They don't live here, they don't have a stake in what they have, and we, as residents here, we feel that by changing the zoning, our investment is being cheated. We are being cheated out of what we planned for, our forever home, our land, our neighbors. And when we bring high density, and a lot of people don't understand this, we've seen it in cities, oh, it smells like horse. You can't have horses anymore. I don't want to wake up from a rooster at 5:00 in the morning. Let's change the law of having roosters. So, my husband and I, we feel strongly that as the city, you have a responsibility and obligation to the residents of this beautiful city to keep and uphold what we all live for here in Harrisville City, our beautiful community. I hope you will keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Randy Smith, and I just wanted to stand for a second and maybe applaud the city. I personally think this is a fantastic idea. I think of my two daughters, and I worry that they'll ever own a home. And apologize maybe for the sports analogy, but I think growing up, and I'm getting ready to try out for the basketball team, and I practice, and I practice, and I practice, and then I show up at tryouts, and the hoop is now 15 feet, it's not at 10, and I can't make a shot. The standards have changed, and Utah's median price home is getting close to $600,000. And tools to bring that down, I think, are fantastic. And as I read the ordinance, I see public process, I see accountability, and I do, and I actually see holding the developer to the fire, too. I mean, as a businessman, I want to do the thing that's most profitable for me, but this ordinance, where it's price-controlled, kind of controls the product, and I thought, I think that's pretty fantastic. And I do recognize that change is hard, but I appreciate you guys being forward-thinking and looking at this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kirk Nagro, and definitely want to be grateful for the work that you're doing. There's so many of these meetings that aren't exactly fun, and I appreciate your dedication for listening to us and being involved in the process, so thank you. As a resident, we just moved here roughly about a year ago, and obviously, the big draw was the rural feel that we have, and then the neighbors. As we moved in, they were amazing, and so the community here is, we felt it was a successful choice. One of the things that I did question prior to moving in was zoning laws and what was the long-term plan. And we were assured that, yeah, we're not looking to make any big changes, and I also have been in some economic meetings, have definitely even with the governor, talking about affordable housing. I understand that it is a balancing act. You know, it's a tough, tough situation, and I think the concern that I'm hearing from my neighbors and the residents are, are we appropriately planning these shifts? I think the concern is, is they don't want to see, you know, pockets of high-density developments scattered throughout the community without reasonable planning, and then having the infrastructure impacted. Throughout the state, I've seen areas where this has gone horrific, where communities can't, they can move at 5:00. It's gridlocked, it takes an hour to get home on cross streets because the infrastructure's not in place for the influx that's going. Well aware that Weber County's saying 17,000 units will be in the West Weber area by 2030, so the growth is coming, and I know that it's a tough balancing act, but I think the concern is, is not to have shortcuts in place that developers can take advantage of. I think we want to have a vetted process that we are able to preserve as well as allow growth in a responsible and a, you know, well-illuminated process. I think it's the concern that I'm hearing. Now, that may, I haven't fully vetted everything out, so I can't say that's, you know, reality per se, but it's the perception that's being felt by some of the residents that I'm talking to. And so, I think the concern is, can we, you know, if we're doing zoning, let's look at zoning out areas that are appropriate for this growth, and then have that vetted versus doing a blanket-type arrangement that I know the developers I work with love to take advantage of and get their attorneys involved. So, thank you for your service. Appreciate you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we're going to have a chance to get this to you.
My name's Greg Montgomery. And I have in my head here an $1884, silver dollar. Now, the value of this dollar depends on who wants it. If I take it to the store, no matter what someone else prices it, it's still a dollar. They'll only trade something worth a dollar. Others will take a look at this and say, well, it's silver. There's a value of that. Others will look at that based on the date and say it has even a more higher value. And I think one of the things why I use this as an introduction is real estate and building, those are cycles. They looked at what happened in 2008 when over lending took place and the government had to build out the lending institutions for their followings. We look at when I built my home, the first part of it, inflation was at 18% interest rates when I built with a special state loan, was a 12% interest rate to build my home. Not quite where we're at today, much higher than we are today, but other factors have entered in. And so the question is, what is the value and what is someone willing to pay for that silver dollar and able to pay? And as you're talking about affordability, I think a couple of key things you might want to take a look at. In the proposed ordinance, there are a few things that are there about how do you determine affordability? And I provided for you in there, if you use the standard, the north end of Harrisville would have much larger homes under affordability than the south end of Harrisville, all because of that four-mile radius and 80% of the median price value. The state is in an ordinance that, not ordinance, but a state regulations, state law, HBD 37, it was approved Friday, is taking a look at affordability and actually putting it on cities, I know of us now, to choose one of the six new proponents that they have in there, one being affordable housing. But their standards are a lot different than what's being proposed in this ordinance to mine. I think if that is the goal of affordability, I don't see the need to create an ordinance, go back and revise the ordinance, which the state within that is asking all cities to do because they have to accept a new, one of the six standards. And also the question's been brought up of what are the standards of development? Unless there's something to have a standard to judge by, how is appropriate judgment made? And I think that's one thing that's lacking in this provision. The other thing that just was a concern is the introduction of townhomes into this ordinance, even though it wasn't talked about, there just has a place, townhomes can be there where, like you said, this is for single-family detached homes. But those provisions are put in the ordinance that can take place. So I want to share that with you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I can agree with what Greg Montgomery has said and I appreciated that he gave me a copy of the email that he sent to all of you and I wondered if all of you received that before the meeting was held.
Early. Yes, shortly before.
Okay. And I think that we have to be careful about crowding in too many homes or it really does destroy the reason that people live here. And I just hope that with the zoning that we have and doing it through that, but an overlay, I really think that's too much power in just the administration to decipher that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for any comments. I think we had also a general debate last week. Yes, thank you.
So I'm Michelle Arnold. I've also only lived here for a year and I just want to point out that you might be aware of this and maybe it doesn't matter, but I think it will change the type of people that will move to Harrisville. If we had known 10 months ago that this was in the plans, we would not have moved here. We moved here and we double-checked the long-term plans of Harrisville City. We went to the city hall and checked to see what long-term plans were before we made our decision. And I think that you will have people who would have moved here who will not move here with this on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for your comments and thoughts and questions. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have to say any opposed or no opposed?
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. Next on our agenda, we are going to have an additional discussion with adoption 562, adoption or tabling ordinance 562, housing affordability.
I've heard a lot from people wanting us to table this, at least take some more time with it. And especially with the new state laws with the legislature just ending their session, I think it would be beneficial to give us more time to incorporate that before we have to then read amend it. That's where I'm at.
Am I allowed to ask a question right now?
Sure.
Okay. I know we talked about this last time, so apologize for bringing it up again, but there's a couple of comments about, anyway, I'll put it this way. What is the procedural difference if, you know, an area plan is going to be developed, but zoning needs to be changed for that to happen? First is what would happen under this overlay? What would be the procedural difference?
That's a great question. I'm assuming it's directed towards staff?
Yeah, yeah.
So the procedural difference would be if a proposed property is in the general plan for a different zoning, the property owner would petition the city to change that zoning. The state law would require that we have a public hearing and the recommendation from the planning commission go to city council for adoption of that. So there would be public input at the planning commission level with a recommendation either way to the county, city council. If the overlay zone is applied, there are restrictions in the ordinance that require the developer to show what this current zoning on the land would allow and what they're proposing, whether they're trying to do affordable or attainable. We have that discussion in our work sessions about what the goal of the city would be for that area in taking in consideration all of the properties surrounding it. Not to get too far on a tangent, the procedure would be the same. We would hold a public hearing at the planning commission level and recommendation of a development agreement would also be included in that process as well. So there would be two steps to that versus a single step on the zoning change. Once the zoning change is made under our regular ordinance, say we were to adopt an ordinance that allowed a smaller lot size versus an overlay zone, once the zoning change is made, that becomes an administrative act all the way through, the development agreement puts specified restrictions on that development that they have to meet as well.
Whereas in the other cases, the zone was, I think the main difference is that if we're rezoning it from, say agriculture to commercial or something like that, we're rezoning it to something where we have an ordinance that says, this is exactly what you can do. And if they meet those things, they can put in whatever they want that meets those. When we rezone it to this sort of the mixed use, we're rezoning it to a negotiated zone where there isn't an ordinance that says exactly what goes in there. It's up to this development agreement that then can tweak and change what goes on that property. So there's less clarity at the beginning as to what will become, rather than pick from one of these zones and say, I want to change to one of the zones we have, picking this zone or the mixed use zone gives you a little bit different flexibility. It becomes based on that agreement, which is site-specific rather than the list that's in the ordinance.
I think the key or one important step in that is having a development agreement with the zone that's being proposed because, like Nathan said, there's things that get written into that zoning or that development agreement that restrict the developer or require the developer to do certain things. I also like the idea of this overlay zone because a builder is able to go in and purchase the property with the knowledge of, this is A1, the city may not approve my overlay for my request, but he's purchasing it at a price that is a true value, where if we go in and we zone it maybe a higher density, then the seller knows that it's worth an increased price or a more valuable price because he knows about how many units he can get on there. And we're not trying to hide anything. It's just trying to get the price down to a rate that is affordable. And if we have the perception that the lot will yield X number, then the price of that property could become more valuable, where if we say, well, we'll allow this, but, you know, we aren't guaranteeing anything, it kind of puts some responsibility on the developer to come to the city with an overlay that will make sense, meet the target price. Exactly. So it's not just a carte blanche, here you go, put as many in there as you want, because there's still a process and that development agreement plays an important step in that process. And Jenny said one other thing that I want to just point out. State law changed a few years ago and, well, a year ago where...
Two years.
Two years ago where residential subdivisions now have one approval process. And that wasn't something that the cities decided to do. That's something that our state legislators said to do for single-family residential developments. There's a preliminary plat that comes to you and then everything else is administrated, which means the city staff and the developer work together to come up with a plan that meets their criteria based on the city's ordinances for development. So.
Does it meet the result we have? Whereas in the negotiated zones, it's, let's craft this development agreement to nail those down. So, but in the way the state law changed, if it meets our code, we can't really say no.
And I would encourage you to also go in and review that SB 0037. There's some very good language in there. And, you know, do I, do I agree with that 100%? I don't know. But I think it's trying, I think the state's trying to help cities with this issue.
So is that House bill, does it present any potential conflicts to this ordinance that you see?
I wouldn't say conflicts.
No.
But I would say because of the late timeframe that it was adopted, we, of course, were already having this discussion with this ordinance prior to what we knew that the state was going to adopt. And I, sorry, Brandon, I just also want to point out that we're not trying to push this ordinance through. We were just trying to get out ahead of what we anticipated the state doing. So now we have more information. There's no, there was never any intention, certainly not on staff's part, to do something without the direction that we knew was coming from the state. But now we do have that information and I would agree that it would be beneficial for us to move through some of those recommendations that are included in the state's law that goes into effect in May.
Especially if they were anticipating some other things that didn't go through too. Quite a few bills going through this legislature that were related to this, right? Well, if they do these ones, then we have to adapt, where some of those we don't and some of those we do. So making sure which ones are taking effect would be nice.
And if I can say anything positive about the state this year in the legislative session, it was, they were trying to give cities a way to be compliant. And credit and kudos to our mayor who sits as the chair of the Weaver County Sub-Housing Committee. We discussed in one of the sub-housing committee meetings with the LEHIE Director Cameron Deal about the possibility of us getting more credit for our strategies if we're willing to address this affordable housing issue in our communities. And they included that in this ordinance, that we will actually get credit for all three of our strategies if we're working towards an ordinance that will help with the affordable housing issues in the state. So I think it's important to note that, that we're not trying to be non-transparent about what's going on in the city. We're simply trying to implement what the state's asking us to do in a responsible manner. And to the point with the infrastructure, all of that has to be addressed in the development agreement. We can't allow housing to go in places where there's not appropriate infrastructure. But as we have gone through the processes with the city council to address infrastructure, those costs are all inflated as well. So I'll turn it back over to you for your discussion.
Thank you. That is exactly what I was hoping that everybody would be able to hear. This city really is trying to be transparent and we're trying to follow the laws, trying to marry everything that's coming down from the state with what would be best in our city. And we're trying to get ahead of things because if we don't, then how we try to catch up may not ever be what we were hoping it would be. And so trying to get ahead of things is going to help us in the long run. And so I wanted you, so thank you for that response because that's exactly what I was hoping that you would hear. I think if you come to these types of events enough, often enough, that you will see how transparent Harrisville City really tries to be in all of our efforts and how closely we try to support the, all the citizens of our great community. So thank you for being here. And we're trying to do everything we can to make decisions that would be best for the entire city of Harrisville and not for any particular area in Harrisville. And that is another big challenge that we also face on the planning commission. So we just appreciate everything that you're doing and your interest in being here. So. We live here too. It affects us. Yes, it affects all of us.
Can I, can I just say that you have some choices to make on this ordinance? And I don't know, I'm just going to throw them out there so that you know what your decisions are. You can deny, you can table, you can approve. If we table, we go back through and we work through it. If it's denied, it means it's dead and we can't do anything. But knowing that state law has come out with this, I would hope that if there's that thought of denial, that you will at least table it so that we can make the modifications to it if you're not comfortable with it.
Absolutely.
Do you have other questions?
Yeah, let me see, does it, it sounds to me with like the recent law passed that would, would staff like the opportunity to revisit?
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial for us to even hold another work session next month.
It sounds to me like that's what you want. So probably should table it is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and that's what it sounds like for everybody.
So when we, if we table, do we need to put any time specificity on that saying that we're tabling until April? Or do we just say that we're tabling it until staff's ready for it to be revisited? Okay, okay.
Or not staff or it can go back.
Or planning.
Address.
Okay.
We just table out all of that and we'll come back when it's ready.
Sounds good. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to table ordinance 562 Housing Affordability.
I will second it.
Okay, I will make the motion that we're going to table that. Ordinance 562. Thanks, Isaac. He's got it out of us. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are on agenda item number five. This will be our discussion to grant preliminary plat approval for some of use Phase 2 subdivision located at approximately 125 West, 1100 North. We will have a discussion and review the city engineer's memo dated March 6, 2025. And do we have any specific staff notes on that?
Mostly the addresses.
Okay.
Sorry, do you want staff to review the engineer's memo?
Yes.
Yes. So the engineer's memo includes add the addresses to the plat to make final corrections on the plat per the red lines and obtain final approval of the subdivision improvement drawings from the ALUWA committee. Is what we call it for short, the Administrative Land Authority. So there are not too many comments on the plat. I believe the
That was all addresses in the red lines.
I was going to say, I believe the engineer assigned the addresses in the red lines. So.
And it's rotated north. It's
Actually, I had turned it around. Proud, you know where it is. 1100 North.
Thank you. This subject track is going south.
I'm totally good with the line area. I don't have any questions.
I don't either. Can we change the addresses?
North is the right side of the ground.
Sorry, I'm from high ground.
Can we change the addresses?
No, the engineer's office goes through the process of assigning addresses to make sure that we don't have conflicts with our own city or neighboring cities that would cause issue with mail delivery or package deliveries with Amazon or any other delivery service. Sorry, that's not a short answer, but that's fine. Because postmaster signs them essentially, so it's not really engineer's prerogative. It's postmaster's directive.
I feel like we could add decimal points. This is 100.2100. So we have authorization for you. I noticed the biggest change on the addresses is where the east and west line is because it goes in between. I guess where open space E is, is where east and west switch in our city.
Which line are you looking at?
So if you go from 37 down to 24, that's about zero east-west. And so you'll notice that the road that used to be 115 west is now 115 east and 125 west is still 125 west. That and the addresses.
But 115 east never existed, so nobody traveled it, right? So nobody's going to know the difference.
Yep. It's just where 100 east is relative to that. If you go far enough, it's not continuous in the area.
Chair? I would like to propose the grant preliminary plat approval. Are you okay? Is everybody okay with that one? For some of use Phase 2 subdivision located approximately 125 west, 1100 north, subject to Harrisville City Municipal Code. The city engineer's memo dated March 6, 2025, and any other staff or agency requirements. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Do you need to do anything else for that one? Okay. Agenda item six, our discussion to grant preliminary plat approval for Butter's Heritage subdivision located at approximately 122 east Larson Lane. We also have a city engineer's memo to review for this one dated March 4, 2025.
Julie has to review that.
Yes, please.
So the engineer has offered comments related to submitting a recent title report to the city and to the county covering the proposed subdivision property. Submitting the subdivision plat to Weaver County Surveyor's Office for their review and approval. Show the public and municipal utility easements on the plat and include any other existing or proposed easements on that plat and address all the red line comments from their office on the plat. We do have that plat here for your review if you want to review any of those red line comments.
Most of them are boundary lines. With all of the boundary lines on the outside are they certain about the boundary line inside that splits lot one from two and three? Or is that going to get adjusted as they do that?
The boundary line between two and three on the lower
No, between number one and the other two lots, that one that goes across.
The north-south line?
Horizontal.
Oh, it's east-west.
Vertical on this and yes.
Yes, the vertical one on that. I noticed they have a lot of boundary lines on the other ones that they need to face the curves and where all of that goes. So I just wanted to make sure the lines are where they need to be.
We actually ended up with three.
Yeah, it ended up with three lots. There's the lot on the north that neighbors what we just did. Berkeley Way stepped into it. And again, it's twisted this bottom. So the part closest to us is where Larson Lane meets 89.
Right.
That's such a reference.
Just, just a little bit.
Anyway, we can leave it how it is. All the comments are right side up if you leave it this way.
Yes.
But that's my only concern is where that line is actually.
Are you concerned that it's a great deal off or okay?
They didn't label the easements as the other one.
Which they have as a note. The city's request to the developer on this was to clean this up because of all of the discrepancies. So I imagine as they did their review, they were checking to make sure that this was a true cleanup of this area.
And we don't need to see the temporary turnaround on Berkeley as they give frontage to this lot. Do we, before we give the preliminary, make them clean rest of this up?
We, that can be a requirement of this body as the approval if it was it on.
It's a comment on there so that it's a legal lot, that turnaround, right? Well, not turnaround, but like a cul-de-sac, basically the lot needs enough frontage to be an efficient on your, so.
Yep.
That's the recommendation to the engineer.
Engineering memo, I just didn't know if we needed to see that or just say subject to the engineer's memo.
Yeah, we should cover it right and say subject.
Subject. Because it's a temporary turnaround, you don't want it in the plat. Okay, because essentially the rag plant will go through there and we don't want to show a little extra ball out.
I don't want that for the sex everywhere. Okay, yeah, other than that, there's not much.
Okay.
It says in there that lot one, so it's going to be A1. Currently it's A1 and commercial because the lots are weird in their boundaries. So this will actually put that up by having a definite line for that.
Yeah.
Anyone else have concerns, comments?
Okay, I will make a motion that we grant preliminary plat approval for Butter's Heritage subdivision located at approximately 122 east Larson Lane, subject to Harrisville City Municipal Code and the city engineer's memo dated March 4, 2025, and any other staff or agency requirements. Can I get a second?
I will second next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, we are now at our public comment portion. Similar to our public hearing, we have a three minute maximum. This is when we open the floor to any of you that need to make additional comments.
Mandy Lynch, again. Can I talk again?
Please.
Yes, you can.
I know you tabled the discussion about the overlay and the ordinance. Will there be another public hearing for the ordinance approval or table again?
There is no requirement for another public hearing of ordinance. So we would encourage you to attend the work sessions so that you can keep up to speed with what's going on.
Okay, well, thank you.
Charles Lynch, again, and sorry, this was in my first one. I had two notes to speak to you about. The reason we moved here to West, or to Harrisville, we moved from West Haven. West Haven did this similar thing about 10 years ago. And, and you can see it today. And I'm glad that you tabled it. I'm thankful for you guys. And thank you for tabling this. In a one mile stretch of road, there's currently a strip club, retail and manufacturing, multiple four-story apartment buildings mingled with homes approaching the $1 million range. And that is not what Harrisville is, nor I don't think it is what we want it to be. And although Mr. Smith wants his young daughters to grow up and have a home, I don't know that he wants them near a strip club. And that's not why we moved here. And that's why we would ask that it not only be tabled or even shut down. And again, I, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your interest.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thanks. If we get another chance, you know, I remember, P A big, sorry. You know, I remember when we bought our first home, it was a stretch. It was a lot of stretch. There wasn't very much money left at the end. But you know, there is a lot of, there's a lot of options where you don't have to have a home. The proposed, the proposed plan is you have homes without garages and hopefully somebody is going to put garages in there, but there's no guarantee. And we know when people have a starter home, a lot of times they don't build up their homes, they will move away. They move to another neighborhood that seems to be better. You know, we don't have to have homes like that to accommodate that. There's other options for people like that. And as you, as you move on, you can move on. You can start out in a condominium. You can, there's places you can look. It doesn't have to be a home without a garage. In that neighborhood, they never ever have garages. And, and as you grow older, like he says, he has two daughters. I was there in those shoes and you know what? When we moved and built our next home, it wasn't that bad because your income goes up, your equity goes up. And then you have options there. And I just really would like you to consider this and consider all of us who've lived there who've made that investment because it will affect our property values as well. So it's not. You know, we're, we're trying to help others, but on the other hand, you're really hurting us in the process too. And which is not fair towards our community because this is an open community. I said that earlier. And it would be wonderful if you could consider that and take all of us into consideration when you saw who came here. You know, this wasn't people who wanted to have affordable housing. It's people like us, like, like all of us who are really concerned what's going to happen to our neighborhood. And it would be really sad if we're just trying to push this through because of legislation and then ruin what's been a really good thing. And you know, there's more land opening up where the zoning isn't in place yet, where the zoning can be put in place for housing like that. Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Greg Montgomery. One suggestion I'd make is that as you've tabled the affordable housing option, to go back and continue the public hearing rather than you've closed it. That meaning you won't have a public hearing when a revised ordinance comes in to be discussed. I think it'd be appropriate that you maybe go back and revise your vote on closing public hearing and maybe continue the public hearing so that they can follow along with the revised ordinance that you'll be discussing at a future date.
Thank you.
Mike Iverson. Going back to what I mentioned before about the same ordinance being proposed in Lehigh and the fact that I found a couple of newspaper articles on it. Would you mind, just for your edification, I think if I could just read a little section from those, would that be okay?
About two and a half minutes.
Okay, it says, and this is from the Lehigh Free Press, which describes itself as a Lehigh-focused news and information website newspaper. Says, "City Council member Michelle Stallings made an unprecedented move by expressing personal concerns in a commission hearing. 'I'm speaking for myself,' she said, 'in a private residency in Lehigh City, although I guess my time on the city council will come into play as well. My first concern is that this will just throw the general plan aside." "I might call this possibly the most significant code change I've seen the whole time I've been on this commission. My gut feeling is first of all to table this, which you guys did as well." "She also expressed concerns about the process behind the proposed code about using municipal zoning authority to manipulate the price of land." "A developer comes in, develops the land, and basically you can use that as a tool for manipulation." "Finally, the Planning Commission sent a negative recommendation to the city council given the code amendment has too many problems with ambiguity and drafting, lack of details. Additionally, the commission listed the negative impacts on current homeowners, overcrowding of schools, strain on infrastructure, and the need for more affected stakeholders to be involved in drafting this type of proposal." I strongly believe this is over a reach writ large and has a potential to be used by developers to extort the city through litigation. Be really careful about that, forcing them to effectively toss out Harrisville's master plan. I'd like to, I would thank you for your service, but I don't envy the task at hand. If my impet put has, uh, any value at all, I would encourage you to do what the Lehigh Planning Commission did when presented this with this ordinance and send, uh, eventually send a negative recommendation to the city council. Hopefully you will choose a course where you can effectively meet the needs of affordable residential housing without ripping apart that which makes Harrisville possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Hohasch. I live in Harrisville. I want to thank you guys for tabling it to, um, look into it anymore. And I know that there is reference to, um, the bill. You guys are being referenced to it. What I would suggest while you're tabling it is go back and read the bill so you know exactly what the legislature's saying in it. Um, because I think sometimes things are getting thrown away. Well, we read this bill and you throw it in there and you think, okay, you know, they read it, this must be okay. You need to know what the bill says to know what you're passing. Um, and you need to make sure also, as he said, in the overlays, there's a lot of this going on along the country, through the country. Um, Ogden, you see a lot of the high rises going up through there. They thought they had to protect it, but the developers found a way, a loophole through the wording, that now you see all these apartments going up. Is that what we want in Harrisville? I know everybody wants to have, it's, it's, we should be able to have, own a home. I have no problem with that. But I'm going to tell you, when I moved here to Harrisville, I left an area where the house that I bought was $50,000. And I came up here to a higher where housing was more, so I paid triple the amount. This is a few, this is quite a few years ago. I mean, I can say my forefathers, they paid $12,000 for a house. Are we trying to go backwards? And I understand that people, it is our right to be able to own a house. But we also need to make sure that we're not putting a nail in our coffin here in Harrisville and allowing developers to come in and take advantage of any of the ordinances that you pass. So read the bill and I would suggest, yeah, I'm watching the time. Read the bill and go back and then actually look at the wording. And, um, I would also like to know where I get a copy of that ordinance so that I can read it because I couldn't find it anywhere to know exactly what it says. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like we don't have any other public comments. So now we'll move on to commission and staff follow-up. Um, I'm sure that Jenny, do you have something to review with us? I would like to take a quick moment if that's all right. Um, okay, so as a new chair, um, for this commission, uh, I just wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you and gratitude to our former chair, Nathan Avril, for his awesome service, his fantastic attention to detail, um, and really all of the time that he dedicates to learning everything that he can about everything that we need to know for planning commission. So I just want to, um, acknowledge him and we really appreciate his voice. We have a great opportunity here on the, on the commission to bring, uh, different skillsets, um, perspectives, professional backgrounds, education backgrounds. And we really do, um, do our best to, to serve the citizens. And as I always mentioned before, we're also all citizens here. And the decisions that, um, are made, recommendations that are made do affect all of us and, uh, we do our best to, to honor that. I've learned a lot in the six months that I've been on the commission. I look forward to learning a lot more while I'm serving here. I know that we all do. Um, so we do, uh, appreciate your, um, patience with us and also just acknowledging that we are all doing our best. So, uh, with that being said, um, any other comments from, um, any of you before we give?
Thank you for the shout-out. And I had one other comment on where to find the ordinance. Um, the city website has a link about planning commission and it has our agenda and it has a link next to it called packet. That packet has everything that we're given to review. You can also, on the bottom of the agendas, there's a link for pmn.utah.gov and you can go to that website, subscribe to us or the city council or the small board or the state legislature. And it will send you an email with a link to all of that. So you can just then click the link in the email and get the ordinance. You can get the engineer's memo, all of the site plan information that comes with our packet. It's out there in open. It's just knowing where to look. And again, it's the city website, the planning commission section. It'll have a list of all of our meetings and everyone that we have has an agenda and then a packet. And then once it's done, it'll have the minutes so you can review the recording of what we're doing here.
Thank you. PMN stands for Public Meeting Notice for those of you that don't know. And also, uh, everything that you see in that packet, it's the exact same packet that we get. So we all have that same information to review. Okay, Jenny?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Avril, for that. I was going to cover that myself. Um, I just was going to give a public thank you to Brandon. He had to step out, but we appreciate all of his dedication and the hard work that he's given to Harrisville for the last couple of years. We've enjoyed working with him. And a hearty welcome to Sarah. We're excited to work with her. And we look forward to holding some additional meetings for discussions and she'll be a great asset to our discussions and bringing her knowledge with her for that. And that's all I have for follow-up. I think that we mentioned House Bill 0037 is the easiest way to find it. If you Google that, um, it begins about 450 mark line. We'll get you down to where you probably want to focus and then we will revisit the ordinance next month in a work session fashion.
Nice.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments, concerns?
I do not.
Okay, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second, Mary.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
And Ralph?